All right, the time is 6:00 PM. We are going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Can we have a roll call please?
You bet. Councilwoman Larson. Councilwoman Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilwoman Galen.
Here.
Councilman Hawkins.
Here.
Vice Mayor Woolridge.
Here.
Mayor Walter.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. All right, we will begin this evening with a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
Thank you. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll begin this evening with our call to the public. The call to the public is for a public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individuals may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noted for discussion in legal matter. I do have a call to the public at this time, Mrs. Bonnie Barriola.
Mayor Walter, Vice Mayor Woolridge, and council members. I'm Bonnie Barriola, 2149 West Shands Drive, Chandler, Arizona. I have two requests. One, please reconsider and send your historic preservation advisory commissions to the Historic Preservation Conference at the Historic Valley Ho Hotel in Scottsdale on June 6th through 8th, 2018. And please ask staff to work with the owners of the three buildings, two which have been combined as one over the years, located on the southwest corner of Main and Sixth Streets in downtown Florence, so they will have their certificates of occupancy before the Historic Preservation Conference on June 6th through 8th, 2018. I recently met with staff, and when I asked what they planned for the future of Florence, the response was, "What council directs us to do." This is the reason I'm asking you as council to reverse your direction to staff. As a member of the conference planning committee, I was chastised profusely at the planning meeting last week because Florence, which was the very first certified local government in Arizona, has not registered any of their commissioners for either the CLG training on Wednesday afternoon nor any of the conference. I assured them I would attend your meeting this evening and share this message with you. Last December, I put together a session for the conference which includes three architects, a property owner, and myself entitled, "Problems, pitfalls, and economic feasibility of rehabilitating 19th and 20th century buildings in the 21st century." I had hoped the owners of the buildings located on the southwest corner of Main and Sixth Streets would have their certificates of occupancy by June, which would be six months later, so they could be included as examples for making Florence being proactive in both the rehabilitation of historic buildings and being business-friendly. For those of you who are not aware, over the past 30 years, I've worked not only in rehabilitating historic buildings in Florence, but also as senior planner for Pinal County. I helped create Santan Valley. Yes, I was a senior planner for Pinal County who rezoned all the master plan communities in Santan Valley, beginning with Johnson Ranch, because all the others. I even rezoned Anthem when it was in the county also. I introduced both site plan and landscape review to Pinal County for new projects. I personally wrote the first comprehensive plan for Pinal County in 2001, being sure to include large commercial areas throughout the county for regional shopping centers, such as the Walmart on Hut Highway. I tell you this to let you know, like you all and IP, I plan for the future as well as attempt to save some of the past while also working for the present. These are the reasons I'm asking you to please send your historic district advisory commissioners to the HP conference and ensure the buildings located on the southwest corner of Main and Sixth Streets have their certificates of occupancy by June. Thank you very much.
You said you practiced that you did well. Are there any other members of the audience that would like to speak at call to the public at this time? Okay, we are closing call to the public. Our next item is the consent agenda. Consent agenda is all items will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is to proclaim April 27th, 2018 as Arbor Day in the town of Florence and recognize the town of Florence as a Tree City USA community for the 12th consecutive year. Item B is approval of the special use agreement with the Florence Aeromodeller Club for the Florence Aeromodeller Park. Item C is approval of reentering into a professional services contract with EUSI LLC for public works management support and consulting services with a new term to expire on June 30th, 2018. Approval of task order number five and an amount not to exceed $38,709 and ratifying increasing task order number four by $12,257.75. Item D, approval of the March 5th and March 19th, 2018 town council meetings. Item E is to receive and file the following boards and commission meeting minutes, March 8th, 2018 Arts and Culture Commission meeting minutes, and June 1st, 2017, October 11th, 2017, February 1st, 2018, and February 15th, 2018 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes. Item F, notice of task orders issued for on-call engineering pursuant to council-approved contract. This is information only. For responses to this request for proposal were received on March 7th, 2018 for an environmental assessment for the post-imbue expansion project and was awarded to Westland Resources. Item G is approval of entering into a MOU with the Florence Unified School District, Florence High School, for the donation of up to $5,000 for the Florence High School graduation night lock-in event. And item H is notice of entering into a common interest and confidentiality agreement with the town of Queen Creek. This is for information only. Are there any members of the council or public that would like any items removed at this time?
Yes, I'd like item C removed.
Any members of the public? All right, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item C at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve the reading of the consent agenda with the removal of item C.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. John, Councilmember Anderson, item C.
Yes, just a quick question. Where's the funding for item C? Is this out of enterprise or is this out of general funds?
Enterprise.
Enterprise?
Yes. You will notice that we were able to negotiate a decrease in hourly fee as part of this from our previous contract.
And second question, was this comprehending our rate analysis?
Our rate analysis includes funding for consultants for these types of services, but not specifically identified as this consultant.
Okay, thank you. I make a motion that we approve item C.
I'll second.
We have a motion?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item seven, new business. Item A is discussion approval/disapproval of the purchase and installation of the Smith and Lovelace Mark IV screen and components, including the Smith and Lovelace S-E-H-L-O-S-S 6SWP washer compactor from Western Environmental, in an amount not to exceed $117,865.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. As stated, this is a piece of equipment for our wastewater treatment plant. This is a piece of equipment that is in dire need of repair and replacement. The staff has been nursing it along for some years, and it's just come to a point where primarily due to odor and just equipment damage over the years, it needs to be replaced. Without getting into too many specifics, are there any specific questions that you may have on this item?
What's the maintenance on these type of items?
It's pretty regularly. The staff starts their day every morning with rounds. They go by on every piece of equipment. They check to make sure that everything is operating correctly, that it's greased correctly, and there are plenty of adjustments on these types of equipment. So it's a regular, everyday thing, including staff is on weekends. Go ahead, Brent.
How long have we been planning and preparing for this? Because I hadn't reviewed the comparison in the budget. Go ahead, Mr. Billingsley.
I think it would be helpful for those in the audience and watching on TV to let them know that this piece of equipment is part of the headworks at the plant. And so this is what screens the larger chunks out as things come into the plan. And through all of our meetings over the last few years, you guys recognized that we've had some issues with the headworks, and this has been something that we've been planning to do. And it's something we've been looking forward to in the CIP, but due to failure issues, it's something that we have to accelerate in terms of timeframe.
Okay, and when you said it that way, it recalled conversations that we've had. Are there any other members of council that have questions regarding this item?
I do. Is this WIFA-funded or is this revenue-funded?
Enterprise-funded.
Pardon?
Enterprise-funded. It is out of, yeah, our fund balance for the enterprise, not WIFA at all. I guess I should add, I didn't really want to go into detail, but I think that some of the council members have been around for a long time. This actual, this actual headworks that is existing is something that Tim and Gordy found years ago in the middle of a farm. This wasn't even purchased by the town. The existing headworks is that old. It was found literally after a flood, and our people at the time retrofitted it to our facilities and have been using it for all these years. And it has been worn out for some years, and it hasn't even been operational for some months at this point now because it is such an ongoing maintenance issue.
Mr. Billingsley.
This, to answer the council member's question, the WIFA funds, just to be clear, they have all been spent that the town had applied for in 2012, I believe. We closed that WIFA loan out in 2016. This is the piece of equipment that you all have seen that looks like some sort of medieval torture device at the front of the plant.
The reason I was asking is because this was part of the WIFA funding a couple of rounds ago, so.
All right, with that, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase and installation of the Smith and Lovelace Mark IV screen and components, including the Smith and Lovelace S-E-H-L-O-S-S 6SWP washer compactor from Western Environmental, in amount not to exceed $117,865.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item B is resolution number 1662-18, which is the discussion approval and disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, authorizing the sale of the remaining. We are going to remove that item for a later time. I apologize for that. The reason why we are removing that for a later time is there is some clarifying questions that are going on, so it'll reappear on a future agenda. Item C is the discussion approval and disapproval of a services agreement with the Common Sense Consulting and Facilitation to provide assistance to the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce with its strategic planning process in an amount not to exceed $12,000, Mr. Brent Billingsley.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I would hearken back on town council's approval of the 2017-22 strategic plan, and there are several different parts of this document that speak to working with local organizations to better Florence and to create partnerships with entities, including the Chamber of Commerce. I'm sure it's not lost on any of you, but at certain times in the towns' past, we've lost our way in terms of coordination and cooperation with the chamber. We maintain an agreement that we approve annually. That agreement has changed considerably over the last three years and has reduced in terms of funding. Based on the approval of strategic plan, staff took a little bit different tact this year, and we sat down with the chamber and said, "How can we better work together? How can we assist the chamber, and the chamber can assist us in accomplishing some of the typical duties that Chamber of Commerce has in a municipal and a regional setting?" A couple of things. We had a joint meeting. I guess the, I need to thank a couple people up front. First off, I need to thank Ms. Councilmember Karen Wall for being the mayor's liaison with the chamber and attending all of the meetings and engaging in these discussions. Secondarily, I want to thank Jennifer as the staff liaison with the chamber. They work very hard to try and draw these groups together towards a common vision. One of the things that was brought forward is, they said that the town used to work with the chamber on regional events in the past, but that had waned in recent years. So one of the outcomes of that was the car show that occurred a couple months ago, that the town worked hard to try and cooperate with the chamber and put on a good regional event that could impact both parties. The second thing is they asked for some assistance, some professional assistance in terms of what is a chamber? What should a chamber be? How should staff be trained, et cetera? They were impressed by the strategic planning effort that the town went through. At that meeting, staff agreed that we would consider assisting the chamber with a similar strategic planning process if they desired. They showed us at that time that they wanted to go through that process. We thought it'd be smartest if the individual that helped us prepare the strategic plan for the town, if she was interested, that she would assist us in working with the chamber. I don't believe Carol Lee's with us tonight, but she had already made a lot of these relationships, understands the town, and had certainly worked through the issue with us. A scope of work was put together. It was discussed with the chamber. We received an initial estimate for what it would cost to do the study. We then negotiated that down to $12,000. And so I'm in front of the mayor and council tonight to request approval if you feel it's necessary to assist the chamber with some strategic planning. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Wall.
First of all, I think that strategic planning is very important for any organization. My big concern about this particular item is that it is so broad in scope, and the cost is so high, which I think $12,000 is high for something like this. And having attended the chamber board meetings, I think it might be prudent for us to take baby steps, helping the chamber through this process. And I would rather see us bifurcate some of the scope of work into smaller chunks, perhaps the first two items on the scope, and getting some type of an estimate for that portion of the work, and seeing how it is received, how the chamber adheres to that, those two steps, and then perhaps come back later and consider additional steps for that strategic plan. I would hate to see something this broad be developed over time and then sit on the shelf unimplemented, which has been known to happen in the past. So that would be my suggestion at this point.
From staff's perspective, it's whatever council would direct. We're just trying to come up with an option and a solution to try and bring the organizations together. One of the things that I had mentioned to the chamber is if we were going to go through this process, that the town would select the consultant and would have input into the process. So however council would choose to go forward with that, we would be glad to assist in any way we can.
Councilmember Larson.
I just had a quick question. I certainly understand the importance of the strategic planning as well and see definite value in having something like this. My concern is, is that I think it builds the most value when there's buy-in from the people that are creating it. Is there any type of match to the money that's being served here? Are we splitting the money? Or is there any buy-in? I guess what's the buy-in from the chamber that they're feeling that they have something that they are invested in?
I don't believe, we've had a discussion with them about contributing funds or buying into this. That's a, that's a new idea that hadn't been explored.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to-
I hope I'm right in that. Okay.
Yeah, I think you'd find value if they, if they feel that they have a piece of responsibility beyond just the lip service of saying what they'd like and what their ideas are. I think that there has to be some type of invested interest there.
Fair.
Councilmember Galen.
I have a question on the, the Chamber of Congress, if I'm not mistaken, they don't just represent Florence anymore, do they?
That's correct.
Well, then why is Florence having to pay for this study like this? I don't agree with the town of Florence having to fund this. They generate revenues outside through their fees, their dues and fees, and I think that they should have ownership to this. The town should not be venturing into this, as far as I'm concerned. I do agree that we should assist them, but not in paying for a study like this.
Very fair. They do have membership that is far outside of Florence, Santan Valley, Queen Creek, Coolidge areas, other areas of the county, so they have a farther reach than Florence, although they're located in Florence.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Well, I think the money could be spent on promoting Florence or helping out monetarily on a lot of our events to make them better events. I think the money would be better spent in that direction if we're going to spend that kind of money. I think, you know, promotion's where it's at, promoting the town, and that's one of the chamber's missions should be, anyway. I don't think we have to guide them in that direction. They should already know that. But anyway, that's my feeling on it.
Councilmember Anderson.
I'd like to see the chamber have a joint meeting with us sometime, and let's talk about what all the common goals are and how they can help us and how we can help them, what the expectations are from both groups.
We can make that happen.
Vice Mayor Woolridge.
I agree with what everyone has said because there, and when you think about the chamber, there hasn't been a lot of consistency there, and that can be a problem as well. We can spend money for this plan, and then somebody else comes along, and like Karen said, it'll just be on the shelf, so.
Yes, ma'am.
I think they need to have some buy-in as well.
It's why we put it on the agenda for tonight, is so we could have a discussion about what is the best way to proceed.
I do wish that somebody from the chamber could have been here this evening to discuss this agenda item and speak on the chamber's behalf. Possibly, we could either vote on this agenda tonight or even table this to a future. I do agree with Councilmember Anderson's suggestion of coming together with a work session.
Very fair. I was hoping somebody from the chamber would be here as well. They were also noticeably absent at our Economic Development Forum. Absolutely. We completely hear you, and we will work towards having a joint meeting. Just bear with us. Give us a little bit of time. Maybe if we can get through the budget and stuff, then we'll do a work session.
Please prioritize our budget.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I welcome any motion.
I would make a motion that we entertain a no vote on this.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion for a no regarding agenda item, agenda item C. And a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number D is resolution number 1663-18, which is the discussion approval and disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, adopting revisions of the town of Florence personnel policy. And Mr. Scott Barber.
Mayor Walter, members of the council, we're bringing to you this evening a couple of personnel policy amendments that are part and parcel to an administrative policy, that it is our intent to have the town manager sign and have an effect on May 1st. The idea of allowing employees to convert vacation leave into paid, into cash, if you will, or to redeem accrued unused vacation leave, been floating around for a number of years. We recently put together a, what's we call Employee Incentives Committee, that charged with the responsibility of planning employee events. There, they take the lead in employee appreciation lunch and those kinds of issues. And a number of issues were taken to them for consideration. This was one of them that came out of one of their meetings. And so we drafted an administrative policy and kicked it around, and the result of that is coming before you this evening to ask for these personnel policy amendments. Why do we need the personnel policy amendments? Because right now, our personnel policy allows employees, under certain circumstances, to convert sick leave to vacation leave on an annual basis. And if we're now going to redeem unused accrued vacation leave, it doesn't seem to make any sense to allow conversion of sick to vacation to be part of all of that. It also provides us an opportunity to come for you this evening and let you know exactly what we're planning to do. Under the administrative policy, what we're proposing is that employees, we have to pick a timeframe, and for reasons I'll explain in just a moment, we decided to pick the 12-month period that actually ends, and I've made a slight change to the policy, not April 30th of each year, but the last day of the last pay period of April of each year. That way, it brings clarity to the period we're talking about. And if an employee has used 40 hours of vacation leave in the prior 12-month period, and they'll still have 80 hours, and they have 80 hours on the books, they're eligible to participate in the program. And this is totally voluntary. We have some employees that will take advantage of it, some won't take advantage of it. But we'll allow employees to redeem between eight and 40 hours if they qualify for the program. This particular program proposes to be funded each year on the anticipated fund balance of unexpended budget dollars for the current fiscal year. So in other words, our finance director, prior to the opening of this eligibility window on May 1st of each year, will have made projections about the departmental expenditure of our budgets, and that will determine whether or not the program can be funded for the coming year. Try to get a handle on what the cost of the program would be. Our finance director took a look at 2017 and employees that might have been eligible to participate based on these criteria, and the maximum amount of the program would have been about $80,000. Why is this program beneficial to employees and the town? Well, number one, it allows the employees to, who have taken but have available vacation leave, that would prefer to be paid than to take the time off, an additional benefit. But it makes sense for the town, and I've listed four reasons there, and there's actually a fifth one that I'll add. Number one, it is an added benefit to our employees, and we're looking for ways to bring additional benefits to our employees along the way. Number two, it allows employees to redeem unused accrued vacation leave each year. That means that we're going to redeem that at the employee's hourly rate today instead of down the road somewhere, a few years down the road, or 20 years down the road when an employee decides to retire. So it's a present value of that leave time that's being redeemed now, which is a savings to the town. Also, hours sold back each year will be deducted from the town's overall financial liability for accrued vacation leave hours. We have to book, put in quotes, we have to book the value of that leave time each year as we cross over into the fiscal year. So we're going to reduce the overall accrued liability by that amount, and so that reduces the liability. And that's one of the reasons why we're keyed on making sure this happens before the end of the fiscal year, so we don't cross over into the new fiscal year with that liability. Number four, we particularly call out Public Safety Department employees who opt to redeem vacation leave instead of the taken. vacation leave instead of the taking, taking the time off. They don't have to be replaced. If, in many of our departments, if an employee is off, we don't bring someone in to replace that employee. And certainly in police and fire, generally speaking, if somebody takes vacation or takes sick leave, we're having to replace that employee. Also, in our, particularly in our fire department, where we have a, what we call our bump-up policy, and that is if, so if a captain takes time off, we not only have to replace a person on that crew, but we have to replace the rank as well. So if we're redeeming those hours, instead of those hours being taken, that's additional savings to the town. And then the fifth one, that I received confirmation of after I actually drafted the original policy, both the Arizona State Retirement System and the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System both affirm that dollars paid out under this program are not pensionable. So what that means is, is that the flat rate or the dollars that are paid, we do not deduct employee contribution to pension, nor do we match that. And that is, and again, that's specific, I have been writing from both of those systems. And so the employees who are interested in redeeming those hours for dollars are getting the full benefit instead of the percentage deduction for the retirement contribution, and then our match as well. So that's the elements of the program this evening. So the proposals for the personnel policy amendments are two. Number one is we changed our policy in the sick leave, which allows employees to convert. And we only had, I think we had four employees last year do the conversion, maybe three the year before that. So it's not something that's been used a lot by our employees. But we're actually taking that away, but we're replacing it with the buyback program. And so we're going to change the sick leave and the vacation leave policies to eliminate the ability for the employees to convert sick leave hours to vacation leave hours each year. With that, I'll try to answer any questions you have.
Councilmember Wall.
This doesn't affect an employee's ability to transfer some sick leave to another employee who may need it.
This does not impact our sick leave donation program at all.
Thank you.
Is this a one-time-a-year thing, or can they come multiple times and say, hey, I want to cash in 20 hours now, and a couple months later, cash in another 20 hours?
Councilmember Anderson, we did discuss whether or not we wanted to do something other than annual, but because we're basing the funding of this on unexpended budget dollars, it really limits us to once a year.
That's good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. I do not see any further questions. With that, we need a motion on this item.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1663-18, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, adopting revisions to the Town of Florence Personnel Policy.
Second.
Sure.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Item E is discussion approval, disapproval for the town manager to enter into an agreement with CGI Communications for the Community Showcase Video Program. Personally, I'm pretty excited about this one. Valerie and I, at the National League Conference, had an opportunity to meet these amazing ladies, and it's a free program that's offered through our league memberships. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Benjamin Bitter.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. With the mayor's recent trip to the National League of Cities, she became in contact with CGI Communications, and CGI is a group that has a sponsorship with the National League of Cities to promote communities across the country. They do this through videos that they produce at their expense for each of these communities, and basically host these themselves. They wouldn't be hosted on a city website, they'd be hosted externally. And really, the only thing that the cities partner with is to provide content, provide pictures or access to people in the community to be interviewed for these videos. It's something that's been around for many years and frankly, a product that I've seen improve over the last 10 years. I brought up the website for Bremerton, Washington, because theirs, I think, is a good example of how it interacts with the city website. I could certainly show some other communities, even in Arizona. But if you look at the City of Bremerton's website, very clean and nice website, if you look down at the bottom, there's right there, City Video Tour. And the cool thing about this is it's integrated within the city website, and so it feels and has this appearance that it is something produced and sponsored by the city. But I think one of the neat things is that if you click on it, you can see it real quickly, it pops up that you're leaving the City of Bremerton website, and it's not, anything that you see is not going to be sponsored by the city or town, but is the, get this to stop for a sec, but is external. So if you look at this, this external website, you kind of get a feel for how the process works. The CGI Communications would get a letter from, in our case, the Town of Florence, and they would be able to go out and advertise their products to the business community. So for example, they could produce videos or advertisements for the companies that want to sponsor and work with CGI, or they could build websites for them. That would be a relationship that CGI would have with the business community. Our role in it would simply say, we have partnered with CGI, and we have this opportunity available. And as you can see, many of the people that have taken on advertisements on Bremerton, Washington, and there are a lot of different sponsors on this one, and then they kind of produce a video if you want. I can run through a video. It's about a minute for the first one, if that's-
Go ahead. We'd love to see the quality of their work.
Or we could go to Avondale's, which is a pretty good one. Why don't we do that? So it's a little more applicable.
Now, also, while you're pulling that up, I'll just put a little plug in. Our non-for-profits, our 501(c)(3)'s within the community, they also offer this service for absolutely no cost, and you'll be able to advertise for free on their site, and they're willing to help. So that's a positive in working with our many non-for-profits locally, as well as our businesses.
So again, on Avondale's website, you can see very much integrated within the website. It feels like it's part of the city's website, then directs you again offsite. You can see on this one, for example, and I'll show the video again in just a second, but notice how there's fewer advertisers. On this one, there's only two advertisers that are on this page for Avondale, or three advertisers. As we talked with CGI, they have no qualms, so to speak. If we end up with one, five, seven, or 12, or zero advertisers on the page, it's always a free service for the Town of Florence. And so with that also, we have an opportunity to kind of limit those advertisers that are on there based off of content. And so if there's something that is objectionable to the town or doesn't match with the town's values or mission, then we could certainly have an ability to limit that company or product from advertising with on the website. So with that, I'll just play the quick little video here from Avondale, so you can get an idea of what it feels like.
Welcome to Avondale. Located just west of Phoenix, we are a community of more than 80,000 residents with safe and attractive neighborhoods, great schools and parks, a variety of shopping and dining opportunities, a close-knit historic downtown, as well as scenic trails and natural surroundings. Here, people and businesses are welcomed with open arms and exemplify the dynamic city ready to take on the future. If you move to Avondale, you will find a welcoming community ready to support you and your family. If you bring your business to Avondale, you will find an environment that will support and help grow your business, a community ready to be your first customers. Avondale is aspiring, achieving, accelerating.
So sorry to turn this into a Chamber of Commerce for the City of Avondale, but I think you can get a feel there of how the videos kind of go and an idea of some of the things that we could add for the Town of Florence. We would help write the script, but they certainly have capabilities within their staff to write the script. And then we would provide stock photography. We would tell them, hey, here are some great locations where you could film and assist in that process. Wickenburg has had the product in the past. They currently have it and are renewing the product. I spoke with the person that is running that program for them, and they say it could take about five months to get through the process. And so it's not a simple process. There's a lot of work behind the scenes in order to set up the filming date and/or dates and set up those interviews that are required. But certainly, as you can see, a product that has some value. You could get some great footage, drone footage would certainly be included with that. And so a great opportunity to promote the town, and for us, it would have no cost. So with that, Mayor, council, happy to answer any questions.
All right. Are there any questions from council? Isn't that amazing, Bill? You always talk about tourism and highlighting Florence.
Well, I was going to say, I don't have any questions on it, other than it's great to be able to have a promotion that isn't going to cost us anything. That's, I think it's really good. With everything being on the internet nowadays, I think it's a real win for us. I think it'll be great, you know? I'm all for it.
Well, where is, who's paying for this? And, you know, we get it free. Somebody's got to be-
The League of Cities.
Actually, can I answer this question? This is an excellent question, because I asked this myself, and so did Vice Mayor Wilridge. And with our benefit of being a National League member, that allows us the access. But where they actually pay for it is that opportunity to be able to coordinate with businesses that want to advertise through their site. It's almost in the hopes of being able to gain the trust and exposure of building websites for businesses or giving them additional exposure, things of that nature.
Just like Facebook.
Better than Facebook. Did I answer it, or would you add anything else?
Only thing I'd say, you can tell that obviously there are certain communities that are maybe more profitable than others in the eyes of CGI. You know, there's three advertisers on Avondale where there was, you know, 15 for Bremerton, Washington, but I think that that's a risk that they're willing to take, and they say, we're going to come in and be a partner with the community. And all they ask of us is really helping develop that content and then providing that last letter that's in the packet on our town letterhead saying, we have partnered with them, and feel free to work out your own arrangement.
Thank you.
All right. If there are no further questions or comments, we need a motion.
I make a motion to authorize the town manager to enter into an agreement with CGI Communications for the Community Service Video Showcase Program.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Thank you. Item F is consideration of the design review appeal by Reverend Kevin McGinnis, Mosaic Church of the Nazarene, located at 5431 West Merrill Ranch Parkway, Florence, Arizona, for design review case PZ 1751DR regarding the removal of condition item number 13. Prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant will provide an approved secondary all-weather emergency access to the new church facility for fire apparatus in a manner acceptable to the town. Mr. Larry Harner.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. A pleasure to see you tonight. I'm presenting item number F on your calendar tonight, again, to repeat. And what, you have the entire packet, by the way, up there, so I'm just going to go over the highlights of it for the benefit of the audience primarily. Tonight's action is the appeal of a Planning and Zoning Commission action, Mosaic Church, PZ 1751DR, request from relief from condition number 13 that was placed on this item. Just very briefly, the overall master plan for the site is demonstrated here. It's at the southwest corner, Merrill Ranch Parkway and Felix Road. The Phase 1 is this area that I'm circling right now. That's the existing structure that's on the site that has been going through tenant More specifically, this narrows it down to that specific building, shows the parking that's been provided, shows a turnaround that has been accepted by the fire department as an emergency vehicle, turnaround from the parking lot and its access off of Merrill Ranch Parkway. Planning and Zoning Commission first heard this item back in 2014, and at that point in time, that particular stipulation, number 13, as you see it tonight, was not part of their approval. The approval expired after 12 months. In February of this year, they re-approved the request, but added this 13th stipulation prior to issuance of the CFO, and that is what is under appeal this evening. The planning commission's rationale at the time was that there has been an increase in traffic since the initial approval, and that the single driveway for Phase 1 is restricted to a right-in, right-out turning movement only. And there was general concern regarding emergency vehicles attempting to access the site of northbound on Felix Road. The fire department has evaluated this site. They had done so prior to that meeting and have done so a second time to reaffirm their position that the Phase 1 building as it now exists is sprinkled and within 300 foot of the roadway. The single temporary access for Merrill Ranch Parkway is acceptable, provided that, that the onsite turnaround is installed as part of Phase 1, which it has been, and that the second permanent access would be constructed off of Felix Road as part of the Phase 2 development when it occurs. The possible actions tonight for the council would be to approve the appeal and remove the condition number 13, to deny the appeal and uphold condition 13, or approve the appeal with any additional modifications that the council deems appropriate. We have with us, and these were just the elevations as the building exists, we have with us tonight the applicant and applicant representatives, as well as representatives of the fire department, should you have any specific questions of either.
All right. Mr. McGinnis, would you like to come up and say anything? Sorry to-
Yeah?
-call you out there, I just-
That's all right. Reverend-
Oh, I warned him.
Yeah, it's all right. It's all good. That's why I'm here.
I love when people show up. I really do.
Guess for the record, I am Reverend Kevin Brian McGinnis. I am from Florence, Arizona, 7615 West Georgetown Way, and have been here for 11 years, and this has been a very long process for us. The approval there has been, originally, includes as the fire department required. I think part of the argument was that the, that in the case that fire department number two was on a, on a, on a run, responding, that what would happen if we had a fire and station number one would have to make their way up Felix, Felix Road toward Merrill Ranch Parkway. So my, I'm not sure if you have my arguments or not printed there in front of you. So it was acceptable to the fire department, and so I appealed. The cut-in and adding the road would cause undue stress to the congregation as to paying for it and postpone us entering the, entering the building, since we are currently meeting on the patio. And it's getting warmer. We're just weeks away from getting in. If this were to be added, it would be a substantial addition to the cost for us. Require a suggested cut-in is, I would assume, would not be acceptable to Polte since they are developing the corner. And the suggestion was to come just, just south of the building, across there from Felix Road, across the back way. And so it has a turnaround. There is a fire plug right next to the building. It has a fire suppression system that is amazing, and I'm less concerned about us having trouble getting the people out and to the curb. And the fire suppression system being what it is, I anticipate if, in the very, very rare case that we'd ever have a fire in there, the suppression system would work and it would be out before the fire department would even be able to arrive.
Okay.
There you go.
Members of council, do you have any questions?
I do. What does the anticipated cost?
Over $10,000.
Councilmember Anderson?
I have a question about, about the current turnaround. Is that paved?
It is. What's that called? The, it's-
Is it aggregate?
Yeah. It's, and it's approved aggregate turnaround there. It's, so-
Does that meet the current code for parking?
Everything on the project meets current code. The, the decision by the board that I met with before was mostly on what, mentioning words like things I would like to see and how I feel about it. And so, and no one's ever asked the church how we feel about, or how we, what we would like. We simply have been expected to meet the codes, and we have. So we meet all the codes and the expectations of what the fire department has approved, and it is more than safe.
Chris, does that meet the parking lot code?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Anderson. This is a temporary facility that is acceptable to the fire department. It is a compressed aggregate surface which will withstand the weight of emergency vehicles, and it will be removed at a future time as the expansion of the site and the development of the site plan continues.
Well, my concern is it's taken them four years to get this far. You know, and these are my neighbors. These are my friends. I want them to be safe. I want them to have a good parking lot, and I want them to meet code.
It meets code.
No, it doesn't.
It meets the code.
No, it doesn't.
Yes, sir, it does.
If I could for one moment, it's my understanding that from the fire department perspective and from the public works perspective, it's meeting the code as it is right now. And in the future, should it, you know, turn into a permanent, there's a plan to, you know, adjust it. I equate it almost to where Pulte has the baseball fields, and there's that, well, that's not even an aggregate area. That's far worse than that exists.
You know, I apologize for turning over the microphone to Larry. I thought the question was about parking, but it was about the turnaround. I misunderstood the original question. The original question was, does a turnaround meet the parking code? The turnaround meets the requirements listed in the ISC, the International Fire Code.
I'm talking about our town code. Our town code is very clear about parking lots are to be paved asphalt or concrete.
Yes, sir, but we're talking about the turnaround.
Well, is that not a parking lot?
No, it is not, sir. The turnaround is not a space for parking. In fact, it is actually not allowed to park in that. Any part of a fire access road or part of a turnaround should be signed accordingly that no parking is allowed. That is for the apparatus to turn around. So note, it's not part of the parking requirement or the parking surface. The turnaround itself is a 95% compacted aggregate base course, and that is listed in the International Fire Code, and it does meet that. And Mr. Kemp, I believe, is in the audience?
He's over here.
Right over there, definitely has done the inspections on that.
I'm not concerned about the fire code. I'm concerned about our street and parking code. I thought all our streets and parking lots had to be paved. I misunderstood it. I didn't know we had a code for temporary parking. I'd like to see that sometime if you...
The turnaround is not part of the parking.
Well, I'd like to see the code for turnarounds.
Okay, sir.
Okay.
Councilmember Larson?
My only question is that we're using a lot of these temporary words. And what is your future goals for expansion and more of a permanent turnaround? Do you have an expected timeframe for that or goal that you're looking at?
Well, we've been working very diligently to get onto this property.
Right.
So until I'm on this property, I can't plan for when dates would be until we get in. So every penny that is donated by these people who live here, taxpayers, goes toward getting this into the building. And then that will free up money when we're no longer paying to build the building for us to expand the parking lot. Our first priority will be to expand the parking lot.
Okay.
So Phase 2, before the building goes in, part of Phase 2 is the expansion and the completion of the entire master plan's parking lot. So the parking lot will be the next project before the main sanctuary would be built.
That was my question.
Which would give us new access off of Felix Road as well.
Okay. Yeah, that was my question. I also want to say thank you for everyone coming out today and showing your support. And I look forward to having you guys meet.
One other question for the town manager. Would this be a conditional certificate of occupancy?
You got it?
Absolutely. Could you repeat the question again?
Would this be a conditional certificate of occupancy?
Mr. McGinnis, as of today, has not reached out to the town for a certificate of occupancy or a temporary certificate of occupancy. The town treats the temporary certificate of occupancy as a means of training employees and/or stocking shelves. I'm not sure that he has any shelves to stock. Well, I'm being serious. I mean, I don't really know. And today, in my particular church, everything is electronic, and we have billboards, and so we no longer have hard copies. So if there's no need for that, he may not be. But we do not allow the use of a temporary certificate of occupancy between us and the fire department. We do not allow that for any use of the building. That is not the intent of temporary certificate of occupancy. But yeah, so there will not be that...
All right. With that, I would like to go ahead and make a motion for approving the appeal and removing condition number 13.
I will make a motion that we, with the fire department approving it, that we go ahead and approve case number PZ 17-51-DR with the removal of item number 13.
A second. Thank you for clarifying. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Moving on to our item eight with our manager's report. Mr. Billingsley?
Mayor, Councilmembers, I only have one item for this evening, and I'm specifically speaking to not only the Council but those folks in the audience and those folks watching at home as I look at the camera here. I received a memo across my desk this afternoon stating that the school district is planning for a walkout on at least Thursday of this week, but it looks like Thursday and Friday this week and perhaps more. I have reached out to our community department, Community Services Department, and I've asked if we could open a contingency plan to be able to provide essentially the services that we provide during intercession for this Thursday and Friday for the parents that have children that attend the Florence Unified School District. And so I just got assured a few minutes ago by Brian that we are going to be able to provide the staffing, to be able to provide some intercession for this Thursday and Friday. We'll be doing that at the Town of Florence Community Center. And please contact Community Services if you have additional questions. Depending upon how active the participation is, we will have to cap the number of participants due to occupancy in that building and our ability to staff it. But I know that, or at least I hope, this comes as a breath of fresh air with respect to those parents and some of the concerns that I think are occurring out in the community likely. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you for communicating that. And just to add on to that, since it's similar along the same lines, for public records, you can visit the fusdaz.com school status, as well as their Facebook and Twitter feeds for updated information regarding any closures or continued closures or what's happening. There was a notice that was sent home today with all of the students and posted on their social media. Call to the public. This is our second call to the public. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak at this time? Okay. Closing call to the public. Call to the Council for current events only. Councilmember Larson?
It's been a busy week. Obviously, a lot of news going on. Mark's been busy over there. I just wanted to touch with some of the comments I've been hearing from the public regarding J-U issues and how they feel that the Town of Florence has really stepped up. There's been a lot of support, and I appreciate that with the actions that we've taken. And I also want people to know that from everything I've heard, bits and pieces, when we were running, campaigning, everything, is that we're in support of our residents here and that we really do have your best interests at heart, and that we are taking those steps to do what we can to watch out for you. Also, I want to assure you that some people were thinking that we were just sitting back and not caring, that we weren't taking any steps in the past. I want you to know that our staff is working diligently, continually, to see what opportunities available both for economic development, also strategically placing us in positions where we can benefit our residents. So I think it's important to know that when you see things here, it's sort of, you know, it's usually the end of the line for a lot of this stuff. A lot of times, the staff is always working to see what opportunities are available and where we can best strategically place ourselves before it ever gets here. So they're always working and continuing to look out for the residents. So I just wanted people to know that rest assured that we are continuing to work for you and that we do really care.
Councilmember Wall?
Thank you, Kristin, for your very wise words. I had an opportunity last week to drop in on the Florence Teen Council Teen Leadership Symposium at the Center. I just wanted to say how impressed I was with the energy and the involvement that the teens had with this conference. It was an all-day event, included breakfast and lunch, if you count donuts and pizza as breakfast and lunch. But the teens were just very excited, very engaged. They had breakout sessions with very motivating speakers and were very involved with those activities. And I just want to thank Brian and his staff for helping to get this organized, as well as Kim Coco Hunter, who was present the entire day and was herding, shepherding, if you want to call it that, getting the teens to where they needed to be, and David with the town staff as well. It was a very well-organized event, and it was actually the second annual event, I believe. And hopefully, we'll see more of that with more attendance in the future. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes, I attended the Pennell Partnership this week, and I've shared with you, I'll share with the public some of the comments that went on there. The way that the partnership works for the benefit of the public is they have a panel each time. The panel's made up of different people, sometimes real estate people, developers. This time, it was made up of three gentlemen that were involved with their towns and public relations and dealing with the state legislature. So the idea was for them to tell what's going on at the state legislature. Jordan Rose is moderator, and her first question, and Jordan sometimes can be funny when she wants to be, but her first question, she says, "Also, you're softball. What's going on with the education?" The first guy who answered said, "Well, he was very pleased that the governor had stepped up and provided this new 20% pay raise for the teachers over the next three years." And he was so pleased that the governor had tried to head off a strike. And when he said that, there were people in the audience that booed him, and they started standing up with their replies. The replies were, "It's not a strike. It's a walkout. The governor put together a plan. It's all politics. He has no funding for it." And they just really tore into the whole plan and program. And so she let the other panelists give their opinion on what was going on. There were several members of the audience whose spouses were teachers, and they spoke their part. But it was a pretty lively discussion. Normally, it's just an information kind of discussion that we have. And then Jordan said, "Well, we'll go to another softball. What about the water issues?" And since I'm on the water augmentation, I know what's going on there. But one of my fellow Water Augmentation Board members stood up, and he spoke for about 15 minutes about how the state legislature, the Arizona Department of Water Resources, and the governor had dropped the ball on all the water issues, and how the Pennell County AMA is being challenged by the Pima and Maricopa AMAs, and they want to take over some of our water allocation. So his appeal was, our people need to be very diligent in keeping up with all of this. So we need to make sure that all of our state politicians are protecting our water rights and our water allocations here in Pennell County. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Colleen?
Yes, I would like to understand from the town manager, on the Historic Preservation Conference that we should be attending, it's very important for our members to attend that. What is wrong with the funding? I know in the past that we've been able to get grants for that, and it is not a significant cost, because I've dealt with it before. So I'm wondering if there's any way possible that we can get funding in order to send members to this preservation conference.
Councilmember, we'll get with you offline.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Well, tomorrow, there's America's Run for the Fallen. It's an organization that they're running from Fort Irwin in California all the way to Arlington Cemetery. They're honoring over 19,000 servicemen and women that have died since October 12, 2000 during the war on terror. Tomorrow evening, well, their mission is blazing a tribute trail across America that would recognize each service member who served and died as a result of the terror on war. It'll take four months for them to do this. This is a foot run. I mean, they're running, they're not on motorcycles. They're running this. And tomorrow evening, or late afternoon, 5:00 at the Legion Hall, there'll be the welcoming of the flags. They'll be running in at 5:00, and then following that, they will have, at 5:30, they're going to have a meal for the Gold Star families that have lost loved ones in this mission. So anybody that would like to go down and show their support about 5:00 tomorrow and cheer them on as they come in. It's quite a feat to run all the way across the United States, but that's what I've got.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Wilridge?
I actually don't have anything to add tonight.
All right.
I don't have an executive session. I don't know how to act.
It's not too late. It's still marked on the agenda. Just kidding. I really don't have a lot to say tonight other than with everything going on, thank you Parks and Rec for being able to step up and help our families. For those families that need food in the community, thank you for FusD stepping up and making sure that, you know, if you need food, you go to the K-8 school and drive through, and you can pick it up. With that, I don't want to get too emotional, so I need a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign.